Does the board want to move item six up before the item one, two?
I understand and would agree with Amy that it's probably good to have everyone involved in resolutions, conversation. And if she's definitely got to leave, which is understandable, then maybe you should take that on approval.
Okay. Any other questions? Nobody opposed, otherwise we'll just move it. Okay, let's start. Number six has four different resolutions involved in it. The first one is your resolution to approve moving money. I don't have it in front of me right now. I haven't been able to pull it from my body. Our police fund doesn't get fully funded, but we're allowed to move money out of our liquor fund into our police fund. We did not do that in our fiscal last year, so we'd like to move both last year and this year into that fund. And the resolution would be, let's see, R. 42? To move that money in there to help fund the police fund. At some point in the township, we're going to have to look at additional money to fund our policing. That was always planned that way, been done that way. And this is just a resolution to move money from the liquor fund to the policing fund as presented.
It does not completely deplete that liquor fund, correct?
Well, it takes it down. No, it doesn't completely deplete.
It takes about three-fourths of it.
Yes.
Which is a fund that's secured by the police.
Yeah. It's money for liquor inspection.
Liquor inspection.
Right. So we really do it at the sheriff and they do their duty, does the liquor inspection in the township. Looking for motion to approve this resolution?
Make a motion to approve resolution R. 2013-42, moving 8,500 from the, essentially the liquor fund to the police fund. Bunch of numbers in there.
Since we're moving money and spending money, a roll call please, Nancy.
Lapointe.
Oh, wait, before I do that, I ought to ask, is there any other comment or question before? Okay.
Lapointe.
Thank you, Nancy.
Scott.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Salinger.
Yes.
Colette.
Yes.
Di.
Yes.
Genema.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is item B, establishing a cash receiving procedure.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to ask a question before you move forward on that.
Yes.
Of the treasurer, that's okay?
Yes.
So is B and C, are those the two that you are taking issue with, that your attorney is? Attorney wasn't specific in her letter. I've read it, but it doesn't appear to be specific at least. I guess I'd like to comment on that before you start discussion of those two resolutions. Ms. Ferguson, the attorney, suggests that there are legal issues with those. I've looked at some of those to a certain extent, but generally speaking, the way I've handled things in the township, when we get a letter from an attorney that they have a meeting, in light of the weight of a letter from an attorney, I generally recommend saying, let's hold off until we can look at this in greater detail. So I guess my recommendation based on that would be, and C would be, let's hold off. I'd like to talk to Ms. Ferguson, get a little more detail as to what she has to say. It's not to say that you can't discuss those resolutions, but before making a decision and having a vote on those, I think it's appropriate to hold off until we can look at this in a little more detail. I'm more than happy to provide a memo in the next meeting that puts it in writing so you have something to rely on regardless of where and how this comes out.
Jeff, I would also ask you, since we're going this road, I guess, to clarify if number one in new business would also go along the same line.
Which one, Paul?
Number one in new business.
Well, I guess.
That's a different issue.
Yeah, I think, I don't get the understanding from the letter and the memo from Ms. Colette that there is a issue with that.
Okay.
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 So if there, you know, if there was, then yeah, absolutely. The other thing, I guess, I just want to comment on is, you know, if this was something that was of a very serious timely matter that we needed to address tonight, perhaps, you know, we would make a decision as to it on the file. These two motions, I don't think, at least from my read of them, they're not ultra-time sensitive, that is. If they're not addressed until the January meeting, there's not some issue of, you know, a statutory requirement or a deadline missed or anything like that. I understand they're.
So I think we can eat quick, speed this whole process up with me making a motion on advice of council that B and C be tabled until the January meeting for resolutions. And January after council's had a chance to look at it and possibly the treasurer's had a chance to look at it further, that we move forward possibly at that time, but at this time, just table those two items.
Do I have a second to that motion? I'll second that. Do we have any discussion? So you're saying, if we table it, there's no discussion at this point, or can we?
Today, there is no discussion.
Well, I think what you're saying is, my understanding is saying, we'd like to look into it, speak to the attorney that sent this on behalf of the treasurer, before we make a decision to see if we are in fact in violation of some statute, which this implies. I guess I'd like, since I'm the one that kind of came up with this, I'd like to just discuss what my thoughts are on why I'm talking about a resolution of, basically what it is, is.
I made my motion on the advice of council, it's been seconded.
And we're having discussion right now.
Okay.
And I'm just going ahead and saying, a board certainly has the authority to set policies, procedures within the township. I guess there can be a legal question, what's a legal policy, what's a legal procedure? As a matter of fact, I, just by happenstance, is that the only, maybe the last MTA meeting I ever go to, MTA meeting today on policies, on exactly that, the role of the board in setting policies. And they highly recommend you do have policies, written policies, that a board approves. And the township can take the form of a policy, take the form of a resolution, take the form of an ordinance. And what I was simply suggesting on this policy was simply saying that the board has, according to statute, but we will go ahead and legalize, sign a policy saying that when cash is received within the township, that's deposited in a timely manner. That's basically it. And I think that we have the authority as a board, but attorney certainly will look into it, to do that. I've got, in the last. Why don't we just keep it to that point at this point? You stated something, you want to stay, I think, we have a motion, I think that's fair. You want, is there anything about the other one while we're doing it, then we might as well do both at the same time, but then we ought to go vote on the motion on it. On the second, the second resolution? Is there anything on it either you wanted? Well, it just kind of follows in the same, along the same guidelines of, there's a big question, I think it'll come up a little bit in the audit, is, as a matter of fact, what I meant with the lectures, is a separation of duty, et cetera, et cetera. And it simply was saying that reconciliation between the treasurer and clerk, the treasurer shouldn't be reconciling the bank statement. And I attempted to lay something out that we have a policy, because right now, if we said, what's the policy in the township on reconciling? Is it in writing, is it clear? It's not. So that was an attempt to do it. And again, I feel the board has the right to specify that.
Off of that, real quick. The thing is, is that in a lot of townships, that's who does it, is the treasurer and the clerk, because you don't have this outside person. And I thought, in my mindset at least, was we got this accountant to get the clerk and treasurer on track, and that we're not necessarily going to always have this extra person. And so, and it is going to fall back on the treasurer and the clerk. And I guess, I saw it in the audit, I read what it said, but it's like, it said for small to medium-sized townships, that this is often, it's considered not a major issue. I'm wrong, I'll quote it, but I think that's what I read. And we're certainly not a big township, so I don't know how they would think that we would pay. I mean, we are right now, I understand that.
Mr. Supervisor, I have a motion on the floor and support. To avoid anyone on this board getting in trouble legally, I'd like to call a vote on that motion and support.
I think we've gotten enough, I think that's fair at this point. So, excuse me, are we getting ourselves into anything legal or legal issue we're having this discussion?
A discussion about policies, roles, statutory authority, I don't think gets you, you only, now, you're only going to get into some legal issue if you're making decisions and implementing those decisions and if they are violative of the law. Now, you know, all that being said, you know, my advice was, we'll bring it back in January. I don't think, you know, I don't, I haven't heard anything that, you know, raised the hair on the back of my neck so far that said, I, you know, oh, I better stop this discussion. I only do that, I do that if there's, if I get that. So I haven't done that, I mean, you know, that's, it's up to the board as to when, you know, in discussion and have a vote.
I think we do have a motion on the floor, I think we've heard some discussion, I think probably based on the advice of council earlier, it's appropriate we vote on this in a roll call vote.
Scott.
Yes.
White. White, this White?
Yes.
Salinger?
Yes.
Colette?
Yes.
Di?
Yes.
Genema?
Yes.
Lapointe?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, and that item number six we moved up, is township health benefits. Kathy?
This is a resolution to amend the budget for the health insurance increase, which can align with the renewal on December 1st. So.
Here.
Why can't you number this resolution?
Uh, B. 43.
43?
Yeah, I think it'd be good to explain that when we did the budgeting for our healthcare last year, we increased our budget by 10%, anticipating a change based on healthcare, as we all see it in the public eye every night on news. When they came in, it came in much higher than that. This resolution, what was it, about 8.9% raises it another 8.9 above that original 10% for the year, tries how much our healthcare costs is going to be.
The increase was, yeah, 21%. So do you want me to go ahead and read the detail, or just about the budget?
I just think, anybody have any questions about the resolution, anything about what you see?
What the cost was.
Otherwise, I think we could just.
Well, basically, rather than 10%, we went up 21%.
Exactly.
Right, that's what it's.
And we need to fund it.
Right.
Right, and that's, right.
So if somebody wants to make a motion to support it, that's fine. We still can discuss it once the motion's made.
I make the motion that we pass resolution number 43.
Amy makes a motion, okay. Second. White supports. Any other comments on the board?
The only comment that I would make is Connie, Kathy and I were kind of designated this, and I think amongst the three of us, we had all talked, maybe not all together, but individually in a different way on this. And one of the comments that came at the end is if healthcare, it's a major issue, it's constantly going up, and nobody knows what the new is going to happen. And so that it's maybe something in April of next year that we really need to look into for our July budget for the next year, on what we're going to do on changing the policy. But to do it right now, midstream in our budget cycle, when the employees and everything else have been set, it wasn't fair to necessarily take that away from them. At least I didn't feel comfortable doing that. And so, but we did talk about maybe making a little more investigation when we come close to budget, on how much it's really going to go up because of all the changes that are coming down the plate.
Well, is it true they couldn't even tell us what that money?
No, she didn't, and they're still changing, because there were some plans that got wiped off at our first meeting, and now they brought that out to say they're going to extend them through 2015, so they're still constantly being changed. So we're not going to know. So anyway, that's just something.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, any other comments? Otherwise, since we are moving, spending more money, a roll call would be appropriate.
Salinger?
Yes.
Colette?
Yes.
Di?
Yes.
Genema?
Yes.
Lapointe?
Yep.
Scott?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There you go. I apologize. Sorry.
Okay, the next item, we'll go back to number one, where we started on the new business, is allocation of township fund balances. There's a resolution in front of you, it's 44? 43? 44. Many times more.
Is that a sheet?
Yes, should be C, three, two sheets. Double sided. The board has taken potential allocations of our fund balance and showed them for various accounts. One is our allocation of six-month general operating reserves, 50% of your budget, so that becomes 388,000. We had before, this was done, a Sailor Park boat launch improvement, that carries on at the rate of 61,920. There's one that's called Hoxsey House Land Restoration. This is not moving the Hoxsey House, this is once that house is moved, putting the lands at the park back in a natural state. So it's not moving the house. People think that's what it is at the time, never was in this resolution. One is a septic plant bond buyout. We put money up of around 340,000 originally, the board before us had, and we had to pay some of that money, about 152,272, to help pay for the bonds for the septic at one time. Since then, by way, the most current year, we have received back, I think it was $1,000 interest on that, and 600 and some, 6,000 and something interest. But we're showing assignment of this money, so it's a tracking mechanism. Public broadcasting, and then Metro Act, which is the road funds, can be only used for whatever road right of their maintenance. So this is a total resolution. Is there any question on this from the board?
I think the only thing that I had a question about was on the back, the non-cash assets with the negative, if you will, markings that we're looking at right now.
Right.
I mean, I didn't fully understand what that was referring to, what the non-cash assets in their negative would be for the farmland, the shoreline, police fund and the fire fund. I mean, is that equipment we own that are dedicated to those?
No, I believe it's, I believe it's money that we are owed, because it's a non-cash, a non-cash asset would be like in the. Receivable? Receivable. I think this came right out of the audit, if I remember right, right, Trina? I'm going to ask the auditors for that, I guess.
Those are fund balances that are already restricted by the nature of their, the fund, like a fire fund can only be spent for fire, police can only be spent for police. I think maybe non, I don't have that report in front of me, I think maybe non-cash might be a misnomer.
That's what's confusing me, I believe, is it says non-cash assets on the front page when you flip the page.
It really is cash.
Yeah, yeah, it's a fund balance that is restricted for those purposes already.
This is similar to a resolution that was done a year or so ago. It's just updating it to get it proper, and that's why we did it in front of the audit, because it suggested redo this appropriately and bring it up to the budget.
But these are, these are cash change, these are cash changes, not non-cash changes.
Right, that's what, that's, I think, what threw me, is it literally says non-cash assets, and that's not necessarily the right title for that block. So maybe we need to look at the title of that block, I think is the way to.
Restricted assets, I would say would be the.
Well, I don't know what you're looking at, but what we've got in front of us, since we're in the auditor.
I think we thought it was non-cash, because it's money owed or something. It's not in cash.
Oh, that prepaid, okay.
Right, and then if you flip the page, we've got negatives, but it's non-cash, so wouldn't that be a cash payment or a cash?
Assets liability equals compound.
Okay, so this should be liabilities.
Right, yeah.
The center, we can change that, no problem.
That's what I'm used to here.
That's fine. Okay, any other questions on this?
So, so in, everyone's at the table, are we going to change that to liabilities in this right now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine. So otherwise, I've looked for a motion to approve 2013-44.
43, is it?
45.
We have 43.
I have 43, so 44.
Okay, that's fine.
I make a motion to approve resolution R. 13-44.
Support.
With the change of non-cash asset to the liability.
Support that as well.
Any other questions, anybody on the board on this? Since it is a motion of wanting about funds and dollars, a roll call please, Nancy.
Colette?
Yes.
Di?
Yes.
Genema?
She's on.
Lapointe?
Yep.
Scott?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Salinger?
Yes. The next item is our annual audit report from Dennis Gardley and Igar?
Your girl.
So who's going to start first, Trina or Mary?
I'll start first. Trina's going to go over, do the heavy lifting, because she's probably more clear and concise than I am. She'll go over the audit report. I'll go over the audit communications letter. And before I start, I had no intention of saying anything tonight, but it was part of Rick's report, that life that was saved two weeks ago was one of our, one of my partners.
Oh, really?
So our firm and his family are terribly grateful that that analyst was right there.
You just never know how close it is.
Okay, to go over the audit communications report, the first page is boilerplate, so I won't go over that. On page two, the second paragraph then refers to see our separate report on internal control for our findings. Trina will cover that as part of the audit report, that's included in the audit report. So there's a few items that we noted, there were opportunities to strengthen internal controls, reporting and operating efficiency, and those are noted on page two. The first one is accruals, and this was respect to with accounts payable. There wasn't a list of, in accounts payable are bills that you owe at June 30th, but you don't pay until after June 30th, probably because lots of times you don't get the bill.
Before the.
Yeah, yeah. So anyhow, the accounting system, you know, couldn't generate a list of what was in accounts payable. So what we had to do is to recreate, which we could from the general ledger, but the recommendation there is just to, you know, maintain a list of outstanding accounts payable at year end, during the year, you typically don't record those. So it's not a problem during the year, but at year end, if you could maintain that list, that would be helpful. Under budget amendments, there were some function expenditures that exceeded budgeted amounts. Technically, that's a violation of the Budgeting Act, and we have to report that in the audit report. There is no consequence to you being over budget, but technically you're not supposed to spend the money until you pass the budget to, to spend that money. We also noted that there was, the preservation fund adopted a final deficit budget of about $100,000, which is also a violation. And the reason why that happened is because the beginning fund balance from the original budget was reduced by audit adjustments from the previous fiscal year, and the budget needed to be updated, and it wasn't. The good news is, is at the end of the year, the actual fund, any fund balance was a positive number there. So, so you actually were positive, but the, the final budget showed a deficit. Under bank reconciliations, we noted those weren't performed timely, and as mentioned previously, was due, you know, three different clerks during the year. And before we started the audit, an outside accountant was hired and got the reconciliations up to date. And so, you know, we're just recommending that, continue, you know, to reconcile those on a timely basis. There is a report, when we submit the audit report to the state, that is one of the questions on the transmittal form, where all bank reconciliations performed timely, we'll have to answer no for this year, but hopefully going forward, that will be yes. And then on the shoreline preservation property and farmland property development right purchases, during the year, those, some of those purchases were funded by contributions and grants, and it wasn't recorded on the township's book, because you didn't actually get the money in hand, and so we had to make some journal entries to record the activity in those funds. And we just noted property purchases should be recorded at fair market value with the related grants and donations recognized as revenue. On page three, at the very top, that first paragraph describes some new governmental accounting standards that were affected, effective for the year just ended. With respect to Acme Township, these statements had no significant effect on your financial statements. So that's just to say it really didn't have a big impact on you. We have some clients where it had more of an impact, but did not affect Acme Township. Further down, under that heading quality, the aspects of accounting practices, we note at the bottom, at the bottom of that heading, certain financial disclosure is particularly sensitive because of their significance to financial statement users. The most significant disclosure we thought was the long-term debt of the township, because your liability for the DPW debt varies based on your flow through the system. So we, basically, our best guess is whatever the flow was for the quarter ended June 30th going forward. And then we also require to disclose to you corrected and uncorrected misstatements. And on the top of page four, is a number of journal entries that we posted as a result during the audit. And during, the previous year, we had 36 journal entries, this year, we had 23 journal entries. Part of that was most likely due to having the accountant helping record transactions and closing out year end. And the biggest adjustments, I won't go through all of these, whereas I just mentioned, record those grants and for the shoreline and the farmland purchases, the outlay and the grant revenue. Also, recording depreciation expense for the water and sewer fund, so that's the, the plant in Acme Township's share of that. And the recording a prepaid expenditure at year end of 287,000 for the metro fire contract. What that means is, you paid all the money that you collected for taxes to Grand Trevor's Metro, their fiscal year is a calendar year, yours is a fiscal year, so effectively you had prepaid half a year at January. Let's see. And then on page five, there's. Let's see. And then on page five, there's just a few new pronouncements that will be coming up over the next couple fiscal years. Financial reporting for pension plans. The only, the only part where this will affect Acme Township is your disclosures about your pension plan and your audited financial statements will get longer. You, Acme Township isn't part of the public employee retirement system, so you're not going to be impacted like the county is with a pension liability or like school districts and cities are. So, but it will just make this report a little fatter than it already is. There's also a new standard about government combinations and disposals of government operations. I can't think of anything right now that, that, how that would impact Acme Township. I can think of, you know, other governments, if they were to, let's say, get rid of their public safety department, you know, and contract with somebody else to provide those services. But I don't see where, at the present moment, I can't think of an instance where that would affect Acme Township. And same thing about non-exchange financial guarantees, if you were to guarantee the debt of another governmental unit or nonprofit, or, I don't, I don't see you doing that. So I don't think that would have an impact on the township. And then finally, on page six, the heading at the top of the page is just informing you there's a, American Institute, a CPA's website, there's this government audit quality center. It's an audit resource center, so if you want to go to that, and there's a, the website address is on here. You can go to that website and learn everything you ever wanted to know about governmental accounting. That's, are there any questions about this letter?
Is that the board, Gordy?
Before, I guess you're going to get into the numbers, the boring, real boring part. I guess the question, I don't know if you can answer this, when we get, this is the first board, with the exception of one individual, it's all new. So this is our first plot. It reflects six months of this board, six months of the previous board. And you go through these things, and you certainly didn't raise any red flags and say, this is really horrible. You just kind of railed through them. So on the accruals, the fact that we had set up accruals properly, and I guess you folks assisted in doing that, is, is this typically what's happened to the township in the past on accruals?
Yeah, it was, it was properly recorded, it's just we didn't have a list that said, okay, you know, this is what we owed consumers, this is what we owed AT&amp;T, you know, this is, so we just, yeah, so it was properly recorded. We just needed the support for it.
Okay, so we are doing the accruals properly.
Yes, yes.
On the, the other issue, you said bank reconciliation wasn't done on a timely basis, and they recommended to do. I mean, that's throughout the guidelines and statutes and policies as they, you know, go over and over here about doing those bank reconciliations. Time was, again, we had in six months clerk, no clerk, clerk. Was this unusual in the, compared to the previous board? Were bank reconciliations always done on a timely basis?
My understanding was that they were done on a timely basis, so I think it was.
So this is.
With the transition this year.
So this is new for this board, okay.
Right.
So, but did you see that we're now on the right track?
Yes.
And the last one was, folks out there don't have these corrective adjustments. When I first looked at this, maybe 20 corrective adjustments isn't a, isn't a huge number. These are some big numbers, you know, 300,000, 971,000, 245,000. But you did say, I guess the good news is this year only had 20 or so, but previous years, so this is.
Yeah, and we'd like to see that, that number drop further.
But this wasn't, I'm just trying to get a basis of where we stand, so this is not a shocker in looking at this.
No, you know, like, like said, you know, the biggest adjustments were for the, like, the, related to the shoreline and the farmland. And, and, you know, if the cash, you know, if the cash, if you actually receive the cash, it will, you know, generate being recorded, but you know, if you go to a closing and it's funded by a grant, you never see the cash, it's, it's easy to miss recording it.
And these were corrective adjustments that accumulated over the course of the entire of the year?
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, and depreciation expense, that's, we probably do make that journal entry for the majority, if not all, of our governmental clients, you know, for the water and sewer fund. Just the, the wear and tear of the facilities.
I have, I have a comment. To the bank reconciliations, there's two sets of them. If the treasurer does them, the clerk does them. So you're talking about the clerk's portion wasn't done.
Right, right, yeah, 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 the clerk, and because it's hard for the clerk and treasurer, yeah. They aren't both done, and you can't compare your records to make sure everything was recorded correctly. Yeah, so that, yeah, so that's the.
Because you, because you've recorded, you, you're talking about general, the general ledger, that's where you focus on.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, because we audit the general ledger, and so, but that's where, that's where you will find, if there are any errors between the treasurer and the clerk, that's where you'll find them is when you both appear, come together, yeah, come together and say, oh, you know, oh, you put that in the wrong fund or whatever and so forth, so.
Hey, you should have the larger rebounding part in front of you, so I will turn you to the, it's the fourth page. After the management discussion and analysis, it says independent auditors report on internal control at the top. So it's after the Roman numeral pages.
Roman numeral?
It's after that.
Real poor.
Yeah, it's the second letter after the Roman numerals, so.
What's the title of it?
Independent auditors report on internal control.
Got it.
Keep, keep going after that. Oh, before that.
Before this, yeah.
Go down to your letter.
Yes. So this is our internal control report, where if we have any, what we consider to be findings related to internal control or compliance, we are required to include them in this letter under governmental accounting standards. So at the bottom, you start talking about the different kinds of internal control deficiencies. And the first kind is what's called a material weakness, which just means that there is a reasonable possibility that your internal controls would miss something that would result in a misstatement in your financial statements. So on the top of the second page of the letter, the item that we call qualifies as a material weakness was segregation of duties. And that is because the size of the township is so small, there's not a complete segregation between the people who have access to the assets or the assets of the township, between having access to the assets, reconciling those assets, and having access to the general ledger. So it's very common in small townships to have this finding, and this was inherent last year. So we're just telling you that we didn't find anything wrong, but because of the small size, it's an inherent weakness in your system of internal control, so we're required to report it to the board of the township. The second, down for the bottom part of the page, we call this a significant deficiency, which is just something that is not a material weakness, but it's considered important enough to be communicated to the board of the township. And it's reporting financial data, and that is under governmental accounting standards. The township management is required to prepare the entire audit report, and then our responsibility is to audit it. However, in the township's case, as is the case with many small governments, we prepared the report for you. We discussed it in detail with trustees, the clerk, and the treasurer, and the supervisor, and they've approved that draft, and we've issued that draft. So this is a finding, just to let you know that you haven't prepared it, however, you have reviewed it. And on page three, we get into compliance with laws and regulations. And we do have to report that there was a noncompliance with the budget act for the shoreline preservation fund, budget deficit. So the initial budget was adopted with the, the fund balance rolling over from last year. After the audit adjustments were posted, that fund balance went down pretty significantly. And so that resulted in the budget showing a deficit of $99,000, the adopted budget. However, your actual results did not result in a budget deficit. Any questions on the whole?
Is that one of those six-month, 12-month things or not?
Um, it's not. It's just a matter of looking at your fund balance after your audit adjustments had been posted. So your, your budget, you have revenues, less expenses, you're budgeting a deficit. Actually, I'll just take you to the page, might be easier to explain that one. It's on page 39. So the shoreline preservation fund, the original budget, you'll see the net change in the fund balance there. You adopted a budget with a loss of $234,478. At the beginning of the year, you had $538,000 in fund balance, so that would have resulted in positive ending fund balance. There were no budget amendments during the year, and after the audit adjustments were posted, the beginning fund balance decreased from $538,000 down to $134,000. So with that decrease in fund balance, that budget adopting that expenses over revenue of $235,000 resulted in negative fund balance at the end of the year. So it really should have just gone back to basically reduce your expenses because you didn't spend that full amount anyway. So I just, when we had a discussion to talk about the draft, I said, just make sure you look at your fund balance after your audit adjustments have been posted and see if you need to amend your budget afterwards.
Really need a budget resolution to.
To amend that.
I have, I have a question on the segregation of duties. If we had somebody, I mean, that's preparing the journal entries, not actually doing them, but then reconciling those journal entries, then we're really not segregating duties again.
We would be looking for, ideally, you'd have somebody preparing journal entries who didn't have any access to cash. So somebody who's not authorized check signer, which automatically takes out the treasurer and the clerk, because you sign checks. Again, it's very common in small townships, but we're ideally looking for someone to review those. Preparing the journal entries, somebody independent of you two, review and sign off and approve them. Same with bank recs, somebody independent of, that authorized check signers, to go back and look at those and make sure they're reasonable and sign off and approve them. So that would create a segregation of duties, which may be created with that outside account. We didn't look at it in detail because he was added after the end of the fiscal year, we're auditing through June 30th. So we could definitely take a look at that next year. Any other questions? Okay, we'll take a look at the financial results. So if you go back to Roman numeral page one, the beginning of the book, right after the index. This is the management's discussion and analysis, and it's prepared, prepared by management of the township. And I would encourage the entire board just to take a look at this, if you want a summary of the financial results for the year. This is all of these couple of first pages here. Point out here. The second bullet point, the total net position of all of the township's activities combined. The governmental activities increased by $54,000. The unrestricted portion of that decreased by $6,000. So I'm on Roman numeral page one right now. So the overall net position increased by $245,000. Again, that's all the activities. The governmental activities are all of your funds except for water and sewer and your fiduciary funds. The business type activities are your water and sewer fund. So the governmental net position increased by $54,000. The business type net position increased by $190,000. Total revenues and transfers in during the year were $3.5 million. Total expenses were $3.2 million. So your net position increased slightly. The general fund had a decrease of $757 in fund balance, so it basically broke even, revenues versus expenses. The total fund balance at the end of the year was $1,172,550. And the resolution that you just passed, you set aside certain portions of your fund balance for different purposes. You do require that you have a six-month reserve. You're currently above that. You're currently at about eight months, so the six-month reserve will be $388,000. Your unassigned portion is $542 available for current operations. If you turn to Roman numeral page two, this is the net position or the balance sheet of the township as a whole. So the total assets in the last column here were $22,000, or 22, 22 million this year versus 22, 22, 842 last year, so they went down slightly. Liabilities, 2,382 versus 3,203 last year, and thousands. And then total net position, I'm sorry, did I lose you? I'm in the last column.
Million or thousand?
Thousand.
It says in thousands of dollars.
Millions.
You have to add three zeros.
So I was hoping it was greater than 3,000 because something's disappeared.
Yeah, so net position at the end of this year is 19.885 million versus 19.639 million last year. So it did increase slightly. Again, you can see all of these categories of net assets set aside. The biggest portion is invested in capital assets, so that's in the buildings and equipment and fixed assets of the township, which is really a non-spendable core.
And includes your share of the DPW and water.
On page three, the next page, this shows the revenues and expenses of the township. So in 2013, the revenue was $3.4 million versus 5.7 last year. The biggest decrease was that you received $2.7 million for the shoreline last year in grants, and the project was winding down. This year, it didn't have as much, so that went down significantly. Expenses were $3.2 million this year versus $2.7 million last year, so those went up. The main increase is in community and economic development, and that relates to your farmland. So when you record, I had one property that you recorded in easement this year. When you record the easement, you write that easement value down to a dollar on your balance sheet, so that shows this capital outlay, basically, because it has no marketable value once the land has been reported on it. So net position, the net change for the year was $246,000, and it increased up to $19.885 million. Any questions on any of the financial results, or did you want to take a closer look at any of the footnotes? I mean, you received it in advance, I know it's a huge book, but I can answer.
Do you get these numbers right out of the balance sheet?
Yes. It's the government-wide, so it's all of the funds combined.
Okay, but I mean, these numbers, and you assume they've been reconciled to the banks, or you work in front of that in general.
Yes, we did look at all of the bank recs at June 30th, and everything was reconciled and agreed to the general ledger. As far as the opinion goes, we did issue an unqualified opinion, unmodified. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give as auditors, so we found that everything was fairly presented in accordance with.
You believe much of the things we've seen in the last year, this adding property with values of, like you say, floating oil, not doing that will make some of this less complicated.
Yes.
I mean, there was just a lot of activity, all fronts, some with monies and without, closings with, closings without.
Probably over the past couple of years, a lot of shoreline farmland especially, there was a bomb that came.
Well, we changed how we did fire, wasn't that?
Yep, that was one of those.
Comments, if we used to pay it hours, we got that, we, we kind of kept it, and now we're just, it's going through. We don't see it, so that's a change.
Metro used to bill you quarterly, and now you just, we met property taxes when you collect them, so it was a difference in the billing this year.
Okay, any questions?
Now that you're finished giving us the. Now that you're finished giving us the brainus, okay. Question, and I don't, I really don't mean to put you on the spot with everything we do have to do in public sessions like that. I raised the question months and months ago, but it was too late to reconsider, a different auditor was, the price we paid for the audit, and it's significantly higher than other townships. So I guess a question, you don't have to give the answer off the top, but you might want to give us something right. What can we do, and what are we doing that causes our audit to be significantly higher than the other townships, Grand House County? What do we have to do to, I guess, reduce the number of hours you have to spend doing the audit, is the net of the whole thing?
It's primarily related to the journal entries, basically. I mean, that's what it comes down to. When we get schedules, we're hoping that they reconcile to the trial balance. And the more we have to post journal entries, the more we have to dig into items to figure out what didn't get reported or what needs to be corrected. So certainly, I think the hiring of the outside accountant, even though it was after year end, I think that did go a long way towards making the audit go smoother this year. I don't know, Mary, you want to add? But I mean, that's primarily the biggest thing is...
And it's a function too of how many funds that you have, and with the shoreline, the farmland preservation, as long, you know, with all the activity that's in those funds. And, you know, as you go for grants in the future to develop the shoreline property, you know, that could get, you know, there will be that added cost while that, you know, what that project is in place, especially if you get funding from the federal government, there's additional audit requirements on top of that. They are talking about raising the threshold to have that, it's called a single audit, but it hasn't been, they're talking about it, but it hasn't been passed yet.
But if you look at other townships, they have significantly lower funds also. So it's, we're not, we're sitting out of line in terms of number of funds we have compared to Peninsula, East Bay, or other townships. Anyway, something I think we need to work on, this was brought up in the last meeting, looking at reducing costs if possible. And so I guess if you could tell us what we, specifically, so we have a target, that if you do this, this, and this, you can reduce the audit, because we're more than double of the average of all the other townships. So need to, need to look at that. So can you give us something based upon what statement you sold long to go through our hooks?
Yeah. I do know the previous auditors, I think it was around $25,000 a year is what you were paying before we started a few, a few years ago.
But the benchmark now is, should be significantly less. So, but again, if we're doing something wrong, we're just not...
We'd be glad to sit down, we could just talk, and you could help us understand. We appreciate that. We owe it to the citizens to make sure. Thank you. Any other questions? Jeff, is there a motion we need to accept as you report? I believe...
I believe you have to accept the...
Audit report, yes. You have a motion from board? Thank you, Truman. We appreciate both of you and most of your time, Mr.
Are we done with the...
Do I have a motion to accept the audit?
I make a motion to accept the audit.
Support. All in favor, I think we're talking about money here, we're talking about money issues we're not spending, so I think a roll call is not required. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Next item, replacement, we talked about board meeting, not the tables, but the chairs, the ones we sit in. We just took one or two out this last week again, back at this last board meeting, Paul was in one, it was not safe, we moved it out of service. I'd just like the board approval to go look at, find some more chairs, start getting this number down. I hope we have the money to do it with, improvements to the township hall, and we just start getting some of these. Worst thing that happens to us is somebody falls on a chair and gets hurt, and we've got a major problem. That's what I'm asking for. This lady...
What's the price that we're taking?
Well, the last time we did this was a hundred. The latest price I've got of a supplier was XL Office Equipment, was closer to about $150.
Per chair?
Per chair. We could look at less...
How many chairs?
Well, we were looking about, let's see, one, two. It's about eight to 10 chairs.
That's about 15.
Yep. We've had these chairs for years and years. I think since I've been here, we can pull four or five of them out of service. I say, I just, one back injury, one person hurt, and we aren't the only ones that use the chairs. The planning commission uses them, public groups use our meetings like neighborhood associations, parks and recs use them, ZBA use them. So it's not just for us by any means, it's for all the people that use the township hall any time.
Where are we getting the money?
Probably take it out of the township hall improvements, the funds we have for updates and changes to the township hall itself.
And there's nothing in that line item to cover up to $1,500 in here?
Way.
I make a motion that we allow up to $1,500 to be spent for new chairs for the board meeting table. For the supervisor to go out and find the best deal he can, if you will, on those chairs.
Any other question on? All in favor? My name's Ben, Paul, please.
Di, yes. White.
Yep.
Scott.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Solinger.
Yes.
Klett.
I think they've been here since I have.
You said it all of them?
Thanks.
Okay, the next item, I won't, was board meeting protocol, board, I don't think we have anything there at this time, so we're gonna go over that. Is the township hall replacement. If you look at the horrible wall behind us here that's bent and over, and if anybody's ever used it, that thing's been here for a long time, it's been the point it's gonna go over on somebody. Surprised it hadn't yet. Tom put a plan together for me to actually put up, I call it a, not a permanent, but a solid wall in there with double doors on it, in range of about $1,200. He'd do the work, and we put, instead of having a floating wall like this, we'll have two places where we have double doors, plenty of room to move ballot boxes and election stuff behind it. So I'm looking for a motion to get approval, the money we come out of that same township hall fund.
One thing I noticed, just sitting here and looking at the drawing that I don't know if everyone got, I know I did, and looking at this wall, I see there's windows up here.
Yep, we would not go above the windows. We would go down from the windows, yes.
Because it's not real clear in that. So you're gonna have something similar, but a little more sturdy, basically.
It would be sturdy, it would probably go about six inches higher than this wall, gives a little more room.
So you're not gonna cover your windows for your light?
No, we need the light.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at.
Any comment on this one? Kathy, you're the one that goes behind it as much as anybody.
Yeah, that wall's pretty scary. They don't want, she doesn't want to stand out very well.
And you can see, today it's even there. So I'm looking for a motion to do that.
And that's where you put your...
All the election stuff.
Machines. I'll make a motion for it, for approval of our replacement wall.
Second, approximately. You want to leave that in there or?
His estimate's around $1,200, anyway.
You mean, you want to say approximately $1,200, or do you want to cap it at something? No more than...
Should we cap it at what?
Cap it at $1,500.
Is there drywall?
Not too soon.
Will there be drywall? I don't see, or we got trim.
Probably will be more plywood than drywall. We've checked with the fire department, it's not a problem.
Okay.
You know, if there's a next thing, it's not gonna create any sort of clarity.
Yeah, they've already checked with the fire.
Okay, then $1,200.
I'd give him some legal room. I mean, there's, these are estimates he got a month ago, they might be five or more.
So $1,400?
That would make sense to me.
Okay. Make a motion for the replacement of the wall, report $1,400.
Any other question?
Again, that's gonna come out of that township forum.
It's over $18,000. We probably will spend, planned spend is...
$2,900 right now?
Not very much.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why we're looking here. It's a good way to do that and to do what we do. Okay, a roll call on this.
With White.
Yep.
Scott.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Solinger.
Yes.
Klett.
Yes.
Di.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I think we're now down to old business. Kane Follow, Jeff, hand out a...
Yeah.
You got Doug?
In front of you is a small packet in the top page, that is, it says quitclaim deed on the top. So if you would take that apart, pull apart, take the last stapled part out first. I'm just gonna quickly go over this to re-explain.
Easement.
No, not the easement, there's a, there's a, two survey drawings, very bad.
Exhibit A.
Yeah, it's, top is exhibit A. Go to the second page of that, we're gonna actually go backwards. So recall, this is the Kane, this is the Kane Sailor Park property line issue. So Mrs. Kane's house encroaches onto the park, and exploring that issue, Gosling Zubek in 2006 discovered that actually the property descriptions between the park and the Kane property don't come together. There's a no man's land that's shaped like a piece of pie. So on that second page, even though you can't actually tell, that dark line, if you're looking at the top, which is easterly, where that dark line starts, that's a point. As it goes down towards the west, which is to the bottom of the page, it opens up like a piece of pizza, but only at the waterfront about 4.23 feet. So it's a very, very small slice. So in addition to the encroachment, that was discovered. So remember, there were some meetings where she was here, and her attorney, John Blakesley, was here, and we discussed what to do, and they had some other proposals, and you said, no, we want to go with the plan where we'll give you a more permanent easement subject to certain things to encroach into the park. We'll also give you the no man's land, in exchange, you're going to say forever and ever, the park belongs to us, because also, recall, I forgot that part of it. In, if you look at that second page again, and you see just to the south, to the right of that darkened line, there is the little line with the X's, that's the fence in Sailor Park. The property line is not actually the fence, the fence is off the document. So in order to resolve that, we had to come up with certain documents. The documents are on the top of that. The first page of these survey drawings, though, you see, is the survey drawing that was done by Gosling right at the end of September, that shows the encroachment into Sailor Park, that very small area. It covers the, you know, outside of the eaves and everything else for the house, so there's sufficient area to encroach, or for that easement for the encroachment. We got that legal description from them. So then, if you look at the, if you look at these documents, at the top one, the first one's a quitclaim deed, and it starts on blank, 2013 Acme Township. This is the deed that will go from Acme Township to Mrs. Kane to give her forever and ever the no man's land pizza. That's gonna be hers. That's all that does. We're doing that because it's not clear who, who really owns that, but the township is saying, we're not owning it, and anything we own in that is yours, so she can now hold out to the world that it should be hers. The second is a quitclaim deed from her to the township for that area which is Sailor Park. That is so that, because remember, Mr. Blakesley was saying, oh, well, you know, there's this encroachment, we might have some adverse possession rights, et cetera, et cetera. And I said, nah, well, you know, I don't think you do. But part of the agreement is, is there, she's forever giving up any rights for that encroachment with this deed. So from here on, here forward, she'll never be able to say any part of Sailor Park is hers.
So we've drawn a line in the sand.
We've drawn a line in the sand, we're settling that line. We're all agreeing with the documents, this is the line.
This part that you have sticking over it, it's fine to sit there, but when you do something...
And that's the easement. And the easement allows that encroachment that's in the top of the survey to encroach, and the language is what we've discussed periodically.
The major renovations that's gone.
Significant structural change, okay, wait, it says, easement shall run of the land until such time that the owners of the benefited property, that's Miss Kane, make a significant structural change to the house. Upon significant structural change to the house, the easement shall extinguish, and owners of the benefited property shall conform to all requirements of the Acme Township zoning ordinance. That means she'll have to conform to the setbacks. Significant structural change means that the current house is being rebuilt or reconstructed regardless of the reason for said rebuilding or reconstruction. Significant structural change shall not mean interior or exterior remodeling, refinishing, or maintenance. So it's not, there's no perfect way to do this. Basically, that comes out to the sort of non-conformant standard.
Now, this is in, I don't know if the words are easy to use, this is in perpetuity, which is the issue with the other.
Yeah, this runs with the land. That means it's in perpetuity until she knocks, or someone else in the future knocks that house down and says, we're gonna rebuild a new mansion on the waterfront, because this waterfront now is worth $100,000 a front foot, and then they're gonna have to conform with the setbacks.
No money changes hands on it?
No money's changing hands. The only cost, remember, to the township, well, let me back up. The township shared the cost of the survey in 2006, the one that found the no man's land, and the township's shared the cost of the survey that you guys approved a few months back, and that was, that was $500, right? $500.
And Mrs. Kane has paid us for $500.
And the retainer cost, do you work in the cell?
It's all in the cap, so, you know, every month I go way over the cap and you get a good deal. What, what, the only other thing that you need to know is that her attorney has not gotten back to me on blessing these in the final verdict. So here's what I'm suggesting. In order to keep this process moving, so long as you're okay with it, approve these documents as they are, and, and if there is a substantive change that is requested by Mr. Blakesley, I'll bring it back to the board. Otherwise, you know, if he says, oh, no, Miss Kane's address is 95, 9861, not 9851, I'll make that change, I'll bring it back to the board. But if there's a substantive change, as the change is, you need the legal aspects of this, I'll bring it back to the board. Or you can wait till January after he gives his blessing.
So a motion to approve the acceptance of the easement quitclaim deeds in conjunction with the Kane property and Sailor Park contingent on approval from Miss Kane's counsel? Because, I mean...
Yeah.
Any substantive change will come back to the board, otherwise, as written.
Second. Any question on, Jeff? We finally got it done.
It took about...
Many years.
At least 06.
The letters go back before, well, they started in 99 when she purchased the property.
A motion's on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign? Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Next item is new monthly cash flow report prepared by our township accountant. And it has two pieces to it. One's a balance sheet, I don't know if we need to do anything to the balance sheet, but the balance sheet gives us a lot of data. I think probably necessarily anybody wants to talk about it, the real meat of it is the report in the bed sheet, which has been reconciled from the June 30th balance as presented in our audit report up to current October timeframe, October 31st, not current December and November. And it gives us a unrestricted balance net of anything that's preserved on... And it gives us a unrestricted balance net of anything that's preserved on each sheet.
This looks familiar.
Looks very, very similar.
On the final page, the October page, it has a column for prior month adjustments, which doesn't appear on the prior, previous pages. Any idea why it's only on one of the four pages?
And then... The best answer I can give you, there probably was none made in that period.
Rather than having an anomaly like that, should it maybe appear on all of them with zeros in the blanks? Just to show that we are tracking it every month? Or maybe it changed a prior month adjustment once, but they're all zeros in this one as well?
I can't answer that, Paul. I think that if that's what we want, we should say if there's none made, um, just make it in each cell.
If it's something that occurs frequently or occasionally, then I would suggest we have it there with zeros every time.
Right.
If it's something that never happens other than the blue moon, then maybe we should have a special note that month that this was the blue moon.
What that, what that prior month adjustments are, the adjustments that haven't, have carried over from a previous month. And you're right, it's not on the other reports.
I, I understand why it's there.
Okay.
And I don't have a problem with it being there.
Okay.
I have a problem with it being on one and not the other three.
Sure.
That's my problem.
With how some note that there wasn't any.
It, right, it either needs to be on all four or off all four.
Well, but, but...
Or a no, I mean...
Or a no, because there's none made. That's all I'm trying to get.
Right. Something explaining that.
Yeah. That's a fair point, I got that. Any, any other questions on this report? Anybody?
So are we going to use this in place of a treasures report? Is that the idea here? Because this is my treasures report, it's just...
It's not exactly...
It's the exact one I gave you guys.
No, no, it's not.
Really?
I think the, the first answer probably to your question, Connie, is it would be, yes, I think that's what we're proposing. We use this.
Okay, so this will be my treasures report?
This, this would be the monthly cash reconciled to bank report.
Okay.
Now, I don't, there is a question. Do you still think there's an importance to do what I call just a bank balance for each bank account as a separate thing?
Well, I do the bank balance as I could, I mean, is this something that, this is the one thing that you and I sat down and went over. This is the one that you and I sat down and went over.
You went over your report. Which is this, this is very similar, if, if you compare them. It is, it's very similar.
So where did you get the layout?
This report was done by Dennis.
This report was done by me. This is my report. You guys saw it, come on.
This...
Research it.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Where did you guys get it?
What we just have Dennis put this together.
Dennis put the numbers in.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, remember, you weren't going to be here this month. You've been waiting for several months to get a report. So we had to do something to find out how much money we had. And here's the question that came up at the last board meeting is, what's the balance? We didn't know. So the motion at the last board meeting was to have the account go back to June and reconstruct this. So we would have something that we feel confident that we can approve. Because we have not approved the treasure report for several months now. So that, that was the, that's what happened.
So this is the treasures report now?
Well, it's, I don't know if you want to call it the treasures report. It's the Acme Township monthly cash report. I think it's a, it's not, it doesn't come from the bank, uh...
Yes, it does.
The bank statements.
Yes, it does, yes, it does.
I asked the question, is, does this come, is this the, the bank statement or is this from the general ledger? The answer I got was, is, these are the numbers that are coming through the reconcile, coming through the general ledger.
They're coming from the general ledger.
Okay.
Coming from the bank statement. Well, yeah, they're coming from the bank statement. Because these are, these don't change.
Well, they change if there's activity.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
So is it, is it general ledger numbers or account numbers? Who's doing this report?
Dennis put this together.
Dennis put the numbers in here.
Mm-hmm.
So am I going to do an exact same report every month? Or are we going to disregard a treasure report and use this?
We never got that, far in discussion.
I think that's an over question.
That's what I'm asking.
So what's the...
Am I going to do, because this is my layout, this is my report.
It's very close.
It's close, I mean, the, the buns are there, but the report, the format has Connie...
Well, I'm just, it's amazing that he had the same ideas that I did, just to show. But anyway, okay, anyway, let me ask, let me ask the question. This report then has bank balance account numbers, which balance with the general ledger account numbers. Do you want me to create an exact same report as this each month?
My answer would be no. I think that would be redundant and not worthwhile for, to do.
So where are you going to get the bank numbers?
Well, let me, let me ask a question. Again, not an account, I understand the concepts. If you take the, if, if there's no outstanding checks or no deposits, you know, everything's in sync, the general ledger and the bank statement should tie to the penny.
Well, even if there's activity, they should.
Well, yeah, when you reconcile.
Right.
But, I mean, that's the thing, but if there's...
But it doesn't matter.
The reconciliation between the general ledger and the bank statement is for that activity in the general ledger that hadn't been reported, the person hasn't cashed the check, they haven't processed the deposit.
Well, that's a bank reconciliation.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's the bank reconciliation. But we need to know, and they should be fairly close.
They should be exactly the same.
No, let me, Connie, just... Generally speaking, if you look at the bank statement without doing reconciliation and you look at the general ledger, they're fairly close, okay? But you still have to do the reconciliation to reconcile the general ledger to the bank statement. And you do that. That's a step and you do it or whoever does it. We're saying, okay, on this report, the question is, and you ask a valid question. Are these numbers from the bank statement or are they from the general ledger? And it can be either one, one or the other. These won't reflect, uh, they won't match exactly to the bank statement if there's any reconciliation that's gone.
If there's any outstanding checks.
If there's any outstanding checks. So the question is, we just need to know, where is this coming from? And generally speaking, if you want to know your cash position, you want to know what the general ledger says. And that's what, to know how much money is available to spend, the general ledger is what we need, but my opinion. Because we could have passed a check, we could have sent out a check for two hundred thousand dollars that hasn't cashed, that hasn't been deposited yet. So to look strictly at the bank statement, you don't want to look at that.
Gordy, I can appreciate what you're saying and what your questions may have been to come up with something similar to this. As far as the comment that, no, I believe Jay made, no, it would be silly to duplicate this. This is from a person that we hired. I'm not comfortable accepting this from a person that we hired over a person that was elected to do this. This report is needed by the board. It's in regards to money from the township, that's what the treasurer was elected to do. She was out on a medical leave situation. We asked someone in the office to help fill in the blanks, if you will. That's done, that's great. It appears Connie's back, at least she's here with us tonight. This is Connie's report, not someone in the office. That's my opinion.
I agree with that.
Well, while we're on that general subject, um, I mean, I don't have to sit here and keep my mouth shut. Everybody knows me, I'm not shy, I'm not nervous or stinking. First of all, you know, I, I was not prepared for a time to be here. Certainly was not prepared to get a letter, the letter from her attorney saying I need to cease and desist from spreading defamatory statements about our client. So this kind of got me a bit off guard, but... You mentioned, you know, well, let's just go back in time. October of board meeting, we received a treasures report that has been kind of the guideline of how much money we have to spend for, uh... How much money was uncommitted, is available. Connie gave a lot of explanation about email from this person, email from that person, Dennis said this, Dennis said that. But at the end of the day, the report we were given, the treasurer signed it. That's information that's of value, that I got this, I got that. But when you sign something, you're taking, your responsibility, you signed your income statement, your tax return. You're, you're liable, not the person that prepared it, so...
Very good reason why I should be doing this and not somebody else.
Let me just finish on that point. So we were told we had a balance, and if it was off by a thousand, two thousand, ten thousand, it probably would slip right by us. But it was a shocker that it was, we only had twenty thousand dollars or some number. In fact, we had about two hundred thousand. And we needed to know. I mean, we went, we jumped through hoops, as you recall. And we called a special meeting. Well, we wanted just an explanation, what is this? And at that first meeting, there was nothing, I know some people said, "Oh, there's all kinds of accusatory things." There was nothing accusatory in that. It was, we took it as gospel. I took it as gospel, but that's what the number was. So I really, um, I'll, anything that I said regarding the situation, I'll stand behind. I don't think anything is to clamor when you lay something out. And if you, if you believe it, it's, I'll stand behind it. And if someone wants to take me to court, shoot the lock off. But I just want a report that ties to the system. And getting something from the general ledger, which is the system, I feel much more comfortable with. And that's really where we stand. The general ledger is the gospel. And if you're looking at something else, a spreadsheet or whatever, and that's why I asked for, to give us a copy of the balance sheet right from the system. I mean, I'm a, I had asked the previous board in reporting, why don't you have a balance sheet? And they just kind of looked at me and I brought it up again. And with the new clerk, wanted to make sure that, you know, it didn't bother her with a lot of things. But there's a great report in here now that tells us what's going on, so... You know, it's unfortunate to air this stuff in our dirty laundry in public, but that's the law. You can't have a closed meeting and hammer these things out. It's just a, it's a bad situation. You have to have a public meeting where you air these things, these things out. But I still go back to the, the way this was all rolled out and us flogged sitting there.
The meeting in October, if you recall, I, I, I mentioned at least once, if not two, three times, there had to be an error somewhere. Let's find where the error is, figure out what numbers were in the wrong blocks or what happened. And, and it was shifted from the attention of that, which is what was found to have happened, to how are we going to get the money moved to pay the bills? All along, I said there was no issue with paying the bills, there's got to be an error somewhere. And by the looks of it, I haven't personally dug into it other than what I was given tonight. It was an error between the offices giving each other a number and it got put in the wrong block. It appears this is going to correct that. This is a report that I believe is more required, accurate, needed from a treasurer than it is from someone that works in our office that we hired. And the reason I say it that way is the treasurer was elected to do this. And so if that's the case, why would we take someone else's report? We can compare them, but to say that it's not needed from the treasurer, but it is from the office, I, I think is inappropriate. And that was what my comment was. Not that it's not done from both, if that's what you want.
Well, no, I mean...
Connie wasn't here because of a medical issue to explain that. Now that we've got it and it's explained and resolved...
I'm, I'm comfortable with those numbers, both, the details, but...
And I think if Connie wouldn't have went on medical leave, she would have given you the same thing, kind of from what I'm hearing.
Yes.
And that's obviously what it sounds like you want in a report. Connie sounds like she has no issue giving this style report. Why would we ask someone in the office to do it instead?
Well, actually, if it's coming from the general ledger, the clerk should report this.
This is something that the clerk and the treasurer can do together.
Okay, I don't, okay, fine.
And this is what we've talked about doing.
Is that what we've done in the past? I'm sorry, Linda, you're here, you would know. Is that what was done in the past?
Yes, and every week we used to meet with Wayne and we went against the budget to make sure the budget wasn't overrunning. And we did both.
Work in the treasures.
And we both brought our, our own perspective report and prepared our numbers. And we were always off a little bit and you know that. Because what Connie may have already put in the bank may turn in, on the twenty-ninth, it went in the bank, you don't get it into your record until the first of the next month. And you might be off that number and you have to reconcile those. I don't know how on earth you can do it if you don't do it together.
Thank you.
Well, we've got this in front of us. I believe if Connie, if you can do the report like this, your old report was very similar. I would agree with that and since you worked up to that time. Then that's, we've done what the board asked us to and that was put this together. Have this board decision in the last, in the meeting. If that can be done consistently, um, I'm all right with it being your report, okay? You said you can do it, it's the right data. I think we just need a report we can live with and if that works out, fine.
Are the numbers, I got to, now I don't care, you know, the numbers are going to come from the general ledger. When I look at this, is this going to be the general ledger?
The numbers will be the same. They should balance, we need to balance together.
And the answer is yes.
In a roundabout way?
In a roundabout way. See, the other numbers, the, the top numbers are bank numbers. The grade numbers are the funds within those bank numbers, that's...
But the numbers at the top, the bank numbers, are also in the general ledger?
Right, yes.
Okay, well, to simplify it, I mean, I haven't worked in the public sector, but you take your financial statements from the general ledger. That's the gospel. That's what every, I asked the auditors, what do you guys look at? They look at the general ledger. So I think our reports...
The only way she can know her general ledger is right is if it, if it reconciles with the bank account. Then we find the errors that happened in both places.
What you do is, first of all, the treasurer doesn't do the reconciliation of the bank statements.
Does the bank reconciliations of the bank statements, yes.
Ask, 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 okay, I'll stop right there.
Yeah, I don't think you're clear on how this works. I, I think Kathy and I are clear, we're good?
Yeah, I've got a pretty good idea.
I think we can do this, okay?
I, I know you can do this, if you take from the general ledger. I'm just saying on the bank reconciliation, reconciling a bank statement, typically the person who's got responsibility, the only person that can deposit money is yourself, the treasurer's office.
And the only person that can write checks is the clerk's office?
Correct.
She's got half, I've got half.
But let me just ask this question, maybe we can bait this wherever. Somebody, I'd like to get a statement from the auditors, pure and simple. Who should do the bank reconciliation? Should it be the treasurer?
You can't, you can't have one or the other. You can't have one or the other, that, that there's a segregation that...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
A single segregation of duties.
You need the treasurer and the clerk.
You can't, no.
Well, that's what I'm saying. My only point is, you can't have, if you have, somebody's to be responsible. The treasurer can't be solely responsible for doing reconciliations.
For the bank account, I, there's the purple book and there's the white book. I do the white book, she does the purple book, they're the same. Then we're done.
Do I hear a motion to accept this report as, Paul, I think you started to say?
Yeah.
Let's move forward.
Yeah, definitely.
Money's good, let's see if we can't just move this...
Did you have a chance to look... Did you have a chance to look at these, Connie?
Yes.
And they look right? So I would make a motion that this be the format we follow with the report from the treasurer and, if requested, the office assistant as well in this regards to the reconciliation of the bank statement for Acme Township. Prior month adjustment column either be filled out or noted as to why it's not on the sheet, such as no adjustments.
Paul, put a motion on the floor?
One second.
Second by Connie. Any of this discussion, Doug?
The only question I have, and Paul already asked Connie, do these look right to you? Because, I mean, when I got this, I just swore it was the same as what we had again.
Okay, just want to make sure. It's just, all in favor of the motion, then say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
O, same sign? Thank you. Now we've resolved this issue, we still have the, and I don't have them in front of me, but we do have the treasures report of 10, 3, and 11, 12. What I'd like to suggest, because we don't have those, Connie, based on our previous discussion of this report and the reports, this, this data for those months, would you accept these as those reports for those months?
Yes.
That way, we don't, we can resolve that issue and move on.
Okay.
You follow me, Paul?
Yeah. Basically Connie's saying these are accurate for those months.
She will accept that, yeah.
Yes.
And it's important we know that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So I think that should resolve that. We need a motion to accept that as that.
As, as what?
As what? This report for the month of 10, 3, 13, and 11, 12, those reports we would have had for those months.
Okay.
This takes the place of those two reports.
So the monthly cash reports would take...
But do we still have a treasures report outstanding for any other times than 10, 3, and 11, 12?
Those should be the only two.
Okay. And we agree that these numbers are accurate?
Right, that's all.
If you need a motion to...
I think we should, yes. Because we never accepted the other reports, we ought to make this one.
So I'd make a motion to accept the Acme Township monthly cash reports that we received tonight that Connie conferred are accurate, as 10, 3, and 11, 12, 13 reports from the treasurer's office.
Do I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
White, any other question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
O, same sign? Thank you. Just wanted to give a quick update on our website. I've got a preliminary view of it, it looks pretty good. We've just still got some editing to do on things like our previous community policing officer was Jason, and when they started. And now it's, it's changed the last couple of months, it was now Kins, we got to get new pictures, things like that. And update a couple of other pages. We hope to have that all done probably before the end of the year, but not quite sure, with everybody scheduled in the holidays. But that's come along very good. I can send everybody a email that they can go online and click and look at what's there, but there's some updates to it, so accept what you see as updates. I found, there was a, I think it's called Proposition A, Connie, maybe you're aware of that, that talks about how the assessor does assessing kind of, that showed under planning and zoning, not under assessor. Things like that. It's just got mixed up.
After the meeting, see me, I've got someone you can email down to Sheriff's Department. I can probably give you a picture that was taken.
I got ahold of Chris.
Yeah.
I did that today. Thanks for the...
Yeah, I was going to say, he's got all the pictures.
So I just wanted everybody to be aware that we're, it really looks nice, we've got some other updates to do that just makes it, you know, when we're doing it, we want to go online, looking good. With current data, we had some data on the shoreline that talks about, we haven't done phase three yet. Well, that's, that was true, but we have now, so we want to change that. Jean Offerman's going to help me write up something that makes that look a little more neat as a package. And she's gone at this point, but, so that. So I just wanted to be aware of that. I have five Tar Trail snow removal, we have started it, we talked about it. The liability of our, for the township's been resolved, and there is no problem there. Our insurance covers this, and Tom's already started doing the pounding. So that was one that Amy had brought to us. I just want to close it out with a completed item.
Fill this letter from Tom that was in our package?
That's being done as it is today.
So he'll do the whole thing?
He's only doing from Bunker Hill to Five Mile, behind track, that's it.
Basically that strip behind the bay and the tar trail.
Yeah, that's it. It goes down one way and from the other. That's being done, and they've been notified, and that's being taken care of. Okay. Just time, I will open for any public comment from the audience. Anybody? Thank you for sitting with us. Who does it have?
Mr. Superlative?
Yes.
Before you close the meeting, I'd like to add, to comment on something.
I'll come back. Okay, thank you. Anything? During the audience, I'll bring it back to the board. We'll start with you, Jeff.
I just wanted to comment quickly on the letter received tonight. I brought it up from the discussion of those resolutions and the issues in the second to last paragraph reflected in that letter. Just so the board is aware and the public is aware, I represent the township. I don't represent individual members of the township board. So regardless as to who this comes from or who it's addressed to, unless directed by the board to represent anyone as an individual, these are, these are things that are specific to you as elected officials or trustees or officers. I don't, I'm not going to give you advice or comment on that one way or the other, right, wrong, or indifferent, unless the board directs me towards, just so you understand that and so the public understands it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board at this time? Doug?
No one.
Kathy?
No.
Connie?
No.
Thank you for being here. Good for you. Paul? Nancy, I asked you, but I'll go to you first.
All I'm saying is, if you can give you a little more detail on what I've gone through in the past, I'd appreciate it.
Hello, I said thank you. Any motion to adjourn?
I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Paul. Second by Doug. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, all.